We're going to call this meeting back to order. Everyone have a seat. Okay, we are ready to begin public comment again. And Diane Ketchum, would you please come forward? And the next person to speak will be Robert Loos, L-O-O-S. Okay, you're on deck. Hi.
Hi. Did you know it's so exciting that the Wi-Fi has gone off and the reporters can't file? There are so many people here using... Anyway.
I'm shutting my hotspot off before you guys all jump on my phone.
It has nothing to do with it. I'm sorry, court reporter, it has nothing to do with it.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Diane Ketchum. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for personally speaking to many of you this past week. There are a lot of people here and many more that we couldn't see because once this room filled, they were in the hallway, they were outside, but they're here and they're watching on TV. And maybe if they can all shout hi from the back...
Oh, no, 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 no.
That was just a joke.
Don't start that.
But they're here and you know they are.
I'm in a good mood so far.
I know, you've done really well, King Ben.
Thank you so much.
We come here tonight from different neighborhoods, different walks of life, and different ages. Some of us has just come from work, others from enjoying the fruits of retirement, some have had dinner, some haven't, and I'm not sure how that will affect us. But we all come here for one reason, to say to you, this comp plan amendment before you is wrong. To build four high-rise towers and increase density in a coastal high-hazard area is wrong. It is not the vision your founding fathers or mothers of Bonita had in mind when they developed the city. That was a vision of building no higher than 75 feet and keeping open green space. This amendment is a vision based on money, not community. WCI wants to rezone this land and change the height restrictions to make money. That's logical. That's not always a negative for business. But voting to allow this when it could affect the safety and well-being of your citizens, that would be a big negative for you, you who are elected to protect this community, its people, and its environment. This comp plan is wrong legally, and you've heard from our attorney and our planner to that effect. And you'll hear more of why this is wrong from the audience because you have a lot of smart people out here who offer a lot of valid arguments. Excuse me. You will hear about traffic and safety issues from the people most affected about it. And hopefully you will recognize that just installing a traffic light, which I've heard about, on Coconut Road is not the answer. And actually, you would need to install five traffic lights for $450,000 each for the communities and business facilities that can only exit and enter one way along this one mile of Coconut Road. You have heard it is wrong to increase density in a coastal high-hazard area, and it doesn't matter if it comes in skyscrapers or two-story condos. Your Bonita plan says you can increase density in the coastal high-hazard area any more than it was before the comp plan was approved. And this land was in Lee County, and you've already heard, that was a lower density. As for shifting density for Pelican Landing, well, you've heard that that's wrong too, and the density may not even be there, and our attorneys have dealt with that. You have heard from the developer that they have vested rights to build the four high-rises, bless you, but bless you again. Excuse me, is that a WC... Excuse me, the CEO...
I'm gonna have to turn the buzz around for you.
I'm sorry.
Get some wheels here.
I'm sorry. But in your packet in the zoning, there's documentation, Z94014, that WCI has allowed only eight high-rises in Pelican Landing, and they're already constructing number seven. You will hear of concerns about Estero Bay, the wetlands. This area, yes, with a golf course, which was an Audubon sanctioned golf course, is one of the most beautiful green open spaces you have in Bonita. So we ask you to please save open green spaces, even if it's a golf course, it's so important. You will hear it's wrong to change the comp plan, a document that was made to last years just for one developer. And you'll be reminded, which you have not heard yet tonight, but hopefully again and again, that your zoning board, your advisory board, where I hear that one or two of its members have served faithfully since this city was started, your zoning board voted six to zero, a unanimous vote, to oppose this comp plan, the elements in this comp plan amendment. And your local planning agency, well, with several members absent, the vote was a close three to two to allow this amendment to continue the process. That's eight out of 11 of your advisors who voted against it. They thought it was wrong. And then there's the state. You've heard that the state agencies found nothing wrong with this. Well, let's talk for a second about the state. The state agency that was to oversee this used to be called the Department of Community Affairs. But there's a different philosophy now in Tallahassee. It's now called the Department of Economic Opportunity. Business rules the day, not the public. We were given 30 days to make comments to the state regarding this plan amendment. The time was to be up January 10th. On January 6th, the State Department of Economic Opportunity sent back its approval letter. Our letters of opposition, I don't believe, ever made it into the file. And now, in the city's packet, that letter is mysteriously stamped "Received January 12th" by your community development department. But on January 8th, your city planner, Jacqueline, was sending emails about this letter. So, we find that interesting. Some of you, and I'm sure she does too, some of you may be concerned about previous council votes on this. We've heard today about, we're up to, I think, four. First, I'd like to say, it's, in courts have ruled, a legislative council is not bound on the vote of any other legislative council. You can change your vote if valid arguments are given, and we feel we are giving them. And I'd like to address, too, the annexation agreement in 2014 that put Raptor Bay in Bonita and what the city agreed to. You couldn't have agreed, as you heard our lawyer, to allow these four high-rises in density because that would have been contract zoning that's illegal. It's my belief you were voting to allow the process of rezoning to go through. So you weren't saying yes to the towers and the density, you were saying yes to the process. Then you voted to transmit the comp plan amendment to the state for review. Again, you were approving the process. The vote on this ordinance and changing your comp plan comes tonight. This project would be a disaster for Bonita Springs and the vision that elected officials and the public have in this area. The community doesn't want the concrete towers, it doesn't want the added density in the wetland and coastal high-hazard. Hopefully, most of you now realize that this is wrong. This amendment will open the door to a change in your landscape, to a change in your city that you cannot correct. So we ask that you listen to the people tonight. Many of these people have never spoken before a city council or even attended a government meeting, but they have come here because they care about the city, their communities, and the future of this land. I know you do too. What you decide tonight is your legacy. Please make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Mr. Loos. Robert, did I say that right? It can't be Loos.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Thank you. Yes, my name is Robert Loos, and I live at 24011 Via Castella in Bonita Springs. I'm a resident and voter of Bonita Springs. But I also have another hat. I am the president of the not-for-profit called Residents for a Better Community. And I just want to say, on behalf of our not-for-profit, I am very proud of our attorney and our land planner. And I think they did an excellent job. And I also want to point out that, to show how important this is, we're not here just in volume to speak. We raised money and hired these, this lawyer and this land planner to present a case that we felt needed to be presented in a professional and accurate way. So this is something very important, and the Residents for a Better Community are very, we're dedicated to this, and we will follow this through to whatever conclusion. I'm also a retired lawyer from New York, and I did a lot of real estate work. And I can tell you that real estate developers, whether they're in New York, whether they're in Florida, they're pretty much all the same. And, you know, they always...
Again, I know where you all live, in a development... Go ahead.
And, you know, they always ask for more than they want. That's number one rule. So, and when they went to their DRI, they always asked for more they wanted. And the DRI, as our lawyer said, it's not the controlling document, because if it was a controlling document, we wouldn't be here tonight. There would be no need for a hearing, they would just get what they wanted. And it's all, you have to put the DRI and that land uses that you're now going to apply. And the whole thing started out in Lee County. And Lee County had a whole plan. And the plan was to have less density up north of Coconut Road. And as people pointed out, there's a reason for that. Because we had three exits out of Pelican Landing onto 41, but there was only one Coconut Road, and not only was it for this DRI, but it was for all the communities along Coconut Road. So it made logical sense. So then, the city of Bonita Springs is formed, you let them, you gave them vested rights for south of Coconut Road, but there was no vested rights north of Coconut Road because it wasn't even part of Bonita Springs at the time of the formation of the city. So basically, you have this plan to... Now, what's happened? What's happened is, we're pretty much developed in Pelican Landing. And real estate developers have another thing they always want, they want to make a lot of money. We all want to make a lot of money. So how do you make more money? Well, let's build north of Coconut Road. Let's build high-rises, because high-rises is where you make the most money. I can tell you that from the real estate developers that I know up north. So, that's what they've done. They've come here to make more money, and it's nothing wrong with making more money, except what about our health and safety? And when I was going over all this with our lawyers and our planners, what astounded me was the fact that it's going to take us 78 hours to get out of here if we have a problem. That is just mind-boggling to me. And how now can we lend more, make more of a problem by having higher density than we have permitted right now? In fact, what you should be doing is looking at lower density, not higher density. You should be looking at this in your overall comp plan, which you're now reviewing, you should be looking at this coastal high-hazard area very, very carefully, because it's very, very dangerous. And I can tell you right now, Dan has gotten me very concerned about this whole thing when he gives all the facts and figures. So, now, you know, it's, when you look at this thing in a really simple way, if you say, "I've got all these units I can build..." Let's say you had 5,000 units that you had in your DRI. Now, you've pretty much built out 4,500, and you've got one quarter of an acre left. Does that mean that you can, they can put on a quarter of an acre, 500 units? That would mean you'd have the highest tower building in the world. That's not it. Land use is looking at everything. DRI is just a very big picture, but it doesn't get down into the weeds. And now you're getting down into the weeds. And you've got to look at everything when you get down into the weeds, because you have to look at every single thing that's going to happen when you approve stuff. Now, I can tell you, our lawyer said that there's one, you know, if you're going to be worried about being sued, there was one thing that our lawyer said that they wouldn't do. And that is, there's a whole argument of taking. You know, can a developer say, "Oh, you've taken my property by having this very rigid zoning laws and land use laws, you've taken my property." Well, I can tell you right now, there's a case, that's a landmark case, it's the Grand Central case, went to the United States Supreme Court. And my law partner argued that case. And basically, what that case said was, you don't have to give the highest economic development to a developer. In fact, that case said, as long, if you're letting him use the property as he's using it now, that's fine. And that's what you'd be doing. You're saying, "Hey, he's got a golf course, you can use it as a golf course." So I would urge everyone to take time, it's a monumental decision, I know you know it's a monumental decision, it's a monumental decision for our community, and I ask, please, do not approve this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I apologize. Barbara Craig, please, followed by Ann Kramer. And I'm just going to remind everybody, at this pace, we have 400 minutes left.
I'm not going to take quite so long. I promise.
So, let's be respectful of you guys, of each other. I'm here for us, I can do it. But I'm worried about you guys, I want you to be able to speak. So go ahead.
Are you ready?
Let's try to hold it four minutes apiece. Let's give it a whirl, okay?
My name is Barbara Craig. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs, and a voter as well. And I live at 4171 Sawgrass Point Drive, which is close by to Raptor Bay property, and I regularly travel on Coconut Road. And I have, for you all, copies of what my talk would be if I used it all, but I promise you I won't instead. I want to put another issue on here. Right at this moment, you guys have a process going on, and that process is the review of your comprehensive plan. It is one that involves the people. In fact, what I have seen out of the first step, step one is done, and that was the process that you had someone do focus groups and a survey to see what we, the people, and that's all these guys behind me, we, the people of Bonita Springs, want is to be our future plan, which is what the comprehensive plan is. What is it going to be in the next five years and the 10 years? And it's very clear from what the results of those first two steps are, the focus groups and the survey, that your citizens want what they have now. I've read all the results of this, and what they want is the small-town charm and an environmentally conscientious city. Those should be very familiar phrases to you, because that's what's on your webpage. And that's what the people want here. Where this huge change, these two huge changes belong, being discussed, is in that comprehensive plan review. You have to think that when you're going to allow some developer who has a golf course to all of a sudden put a whole lot of houses on it, or high-rises, and it doesn't matter if there are four of them this way or 24 of them this way, it's a dramatic change to the golf course. And we have many other golf courses in Bonita Springs where they're in trouble financially. And if you let this one go, you can be pretty sure there's going to be another one knocking on your door pretty soon. And when you make a change like this in a comprehensive plan, you're supposed to include with that the guidelines and the rules and how you're going to apply it in other similarly situated situations, and that hasn't happened here. And I urge you to say no to both of these, and if you want to consider what you want to do with golf courses like this in the future, that it be part of the comprehensive review process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ann Kramer, come on up, and Philip, followed by John Fisher, please. John Fisher.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
My name is Ann Kramer, and I'm a resident of Bonita Springs.
Could you, Ann, go ahead and pull that towards you a little bit more.
Is that better?
A little more.
Is that better?
A little more.
Okay. Listening to all of the issues concerning the coastal high-hazard area that were expressed tonight, this is such a serious issue that can't be ignored for the sake of tax revenue. We should be discouraging development where people would be in harm's way, not multiplying that density and intensity. We have a comprehensive plan here in Bonita Springs. It has a height limit of 75 feet. Building four towers on this is, it's not the only issue that's here today, and I think that Barbara touched on this a bit too. The underlying request is to allow substantially increased density and other mixed uses. And so, the number of residences, the density could be just as intense, whether it's horizontal or vertical building. And so, the text changes and the map changes to the comprehensive plan really go hand in hand. We heard about WCI's reliance on the annexation agreement. On December 21st, the city attorney sent a letter to Ms. Montgomery, and the third paragraph on the first page read, "Although I think this is a non-issue, I will also reference the annexation agreement and the comprehensive plan amendment. But as I mentioned during the meeting, Town of Ponce in La Vipincetta LLC makes it clear that any assurances by town officials that plan, that the plan would be amended to authorize the development could not be relied on in good faith, since such officials lacked authority to unilaterally amend the plan." So, what I understand is that, you know, we welcomed WCI, this portion of WCI, into the city of Bonita Springs. But that doesn't mean that we have to amend our comprehensive plan to whatever plans they want to do for their high-rises. I'm trying to go through some of my notes here because, obviously, so much of this has already been covered, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But when you read the second portion of the text change after the reference about vested rights, you see where it says that there's an "or," and the portion of the sentence, that sentence reads, "or within the Pelican Landing area annexed within the city pursuant to the ordinance 1410." And so, these proposed amendments seem to have much more to do with the annexation agreement rather than the vested rights. The designation for this Raptor Bay property is the country's future, the county's future land use. That has been outlawing suburban and wetlands for quite some time now. If we're going to change that, why don't we change it to something that's equivalent, which would be the 1 to 3 per acre, and then the added additional bonus for the wetlands? There's no reason that we have to increase that density and intensity. And certainly, if we do it in this particular area, it does change the density for the Raptor Bay golf course. It's, the whole issue about what's going on with the entire DRI just seems, it just does not seem to be an argument that resonates with most people. I think you've heard that tonight. As a community, I hope we get this right for the future development of our city. And as we speak, right now, you've got an application pending, the one that's referenced in the paperwork here for the Raptor Bay issue. And that application is for the Weeks Fish Camp property, the old Weeks Fish Camp property, where they want to build four towers there as well. So, the bottom line is, if you start doing it in one place, you have to do it in another place. And then, the Bonita Beach Road Corridor could end up being another corridor canyon, basically a cement canyon. So, but that's for another day. Today, we have the opportunity to set things right with this comprehensive plan. And I ask that you please turn down both the road, the, I'm sorry, the text and the map changes, and preserve this comprehensive plan for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. John Fisher, please, and followed by Ray Eifler. John, are you here? John? On here? Okay, Ray? Ray Eifler? I'm waiting a little bit, because he might be out there. Boy, there... Okay, Jerry Master. Jerry, come on up, followed by Ben Corbly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The comprehensive plan change application lies within the Hurricane Coastal High-Hazard Zone, as been talked about. This is a major matter of health, safety, and welfare for the public within Bonita Springs, Estero, and unincorporated Lee County. Allowing dwelling units within subject area puts residents in peril of danger during hurricane events, as you've heard from the expert. This requires more study and analysis per Florida statute 163.3177. The Village of Estero was not legally contacted on this proposed plan revision as required by this statute. Aesthetics would be adversely impacted by adding multiple high-rise structures north of the Hyatt along the eastern shore of Estero Bay. And as a previous presenter said, any approval of high-rises would establish precedent for added future structures northward to West Bay Club, i.e. Weeks Fish Camp. A comprehensive study of vehicle and pedestrian future traffic impacts on Coconut Road, including all present and future development in this service area, has not been performed. Tonight's entire WCI-related agenda must be voted no. This is a flawed effort that has the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ben, Ben Corbly, followed by Jesse Pardon? Pardo? I'm supposed to know that name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Ben Corbly. My wife and I have been property owners on Bonita Beach since 1987, and in Bonita Springs since your inception. We are residents in Las Palmas of the colony since 2004. We are citizens of the Village of Estero. We are members of the Coconut Road Neighborhood Group. I am an eighth-generation Florida native. My ancestors were settlers in New Smyrna in an early Florida development in the 1700s. When the development failed, my surviving relatives walked north to St. Augustine. It was a really valuable learning experience for the family. I was born in Hillsborough County, raised and schooled in Florida. During the late 1960s into the 70s, while working in Tampa, among the clients I assigned to were real estate developers. Yet another opportunity for my family to learn about real estate development. While some things are different in the development approval process from the 1960s, many are the same. Depending on the outcome, this current situation would be worthy of inclusion in T.D. Allman's book, Finding Florida. The book characterizes development in Florida since the time of Ponce de Leon, for better and worse. For the record, neither my wife or I received any notice from Bonita Springs, or for that matter, information that Bonita Springs had noticed the Village of Estero regarding the rezoning process. Accordingly, we don't understand why we were previously informed, we have no right to speak at your rezoning hearing. I share the concerns expressed by previous speakers against this request. Financial feasibility is easy for Bonita Springs. It will receive annual tax revenue from the property owners who locate in the proposed developments. On the other hand, either the county or Estero is facing additional expense to improve the public facility, that is Coconut Road. Whoever takes the road improvement will face additional challenge with the constraints from private properties abutting the right-of-way on both sides of the road. The reported traffic study provided at your earlier meeting does not warrant credulity. The presenter cited high-rise condo owners don't leave their units in their oral presentation and use an August study period. There is an issue now. The, your Bonita Springs expedited state review package on page 37 of the 286 regarding the comprehensive plan provision contains the minutes of your meeting of November 18th. A copy of that cited page has been provided to your city clerk. In it, I quote, a councilman is cited as saying, "It is an issue of safety." This councilman then proceeded and said, "Stated the need to address this as it is a very dangerous intersection." Mayor Nelson agreed. Information provided by the Pelican Landing Privacy Manager reflects that in January 2016, 31,704 vehicles were issued gate passes, and there were 42,605 barcode entries to the colony. I believe this calculates to 148,618 trips when you do a traffic study for one month. This information is exclusive of traffic through the construction gate, which all vendors now use to enter the colony community. An incidental concern is drainage, another public facility and the risk, the associated risk of adverse environmental impact. There are other concerns regarding adverse environmental impact for the Raptor Bay Weeks property developments. For wetlands in Estero, these concerns may not even be addressed in the Bonita Springs review process. As a retiree, my avocation is fishing. Many area residents, since the mid-1980s, I have fished Estero Bay over 1,000 times. Many area residents show great appreciation for our local environment and a deep concern how the development along Coconut Road will impact Estero Bay, since these wetlands drain into the bay. Other Estero properties along Coconut Road are being impacted, will be impacted by the proposed, excuse me, other Estero properties along Coconut Road are being proposed for development. Will the cumulative impact of all these proposed developments be assessed? Area residents understand that the Raptor Bay Golf Course acreage in part was designated to offset density already specified in the Pelican Landing Colony Development DRI. The school, private club, and businesses in the immediate area west of US 41 on Coconut Road are exposed to increased disruption of their operations due to increased traffic, particularly in the mornings and evening commute hours. Safety concerns will only heighten. In conclusion, you are asked to vote no to this request for changing the comprehensive plan. Your consideration is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jesse, come forward, and Fred Forbes, you are on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, my fellow Bonitians, and especially the folks in the Wayback. Jesse Purdon, for the record. I'd like to also speak on Agenda Item 6A regarding the comp plan, Raptor Bay Towers and Coconut Road. First of all, I would like to kind of go over a letter that was referenced a little bit earlier, and it's from the Department of Economic Opportunity, and it's written to Mayor Nail...
Nelson.
Neil, Nelson. I shouldn't know that. I should know that. I apologize.
Funny guy.
Okay. So, let me give you the quote on this. It says, "The city is reminded that pursuant to Section 163.3184, other reviewing agencies have the authority to provide comment directly to the city. If other reviewing agencies provide comments, we recommend the city consider appropriate changes to the amendment based on those comments. If left unresolved, such reviewing agency comments could form the basis for a challenge to the amendment after adoption." So, I guess my question would be, in regards to the due diligence that was done from a city standpoint to ensure that that isn't an issue, was that done? And what did we hear? Who are these agencies? Maybe questions we should ask the staff prior to voting, number one. Number two, this is unquestionably going to create a severe traffic issue, which will only further compound our already existing traffic issues. Listen, just because there isn't a study done on it, which, as you saw today in our email, Estero, the city of Estero is currently working on a study to show us what we already know, I could have saved them a lot of money, I could have went down to Bonita Elementary, sat down with a kindergarten class, and asked them if I put 1,000 cars on Coconut Road, if it was going to increase our traffic, and they would have said yes. Not only have the folks in Pelican Bay, or I'm sorry, Pelican Landing, spoken out and allowed... allowed in uncertain terms about this, so have our neighbors to the north in Astero. That's not something that's really been brought up today. I consider that to be a very valuable relationship moving forward, and something that's worth consideration in the decision-making process. Last, and most important, DEO warnings aside, Astero issue aside, traffic issues aside, this is about two more far, two far more important things, as far as I'm concerned. Number one would be representative government. Number two would be the direction that we want to go in as a city. The developers, with all due respect, do not run this city. The folks behind me and out there in the, out there in the hallway are the folks who run this city. We don't need the towers. We don't need the traffic. We don't need the citizens feeling like their votes, their voice does not matter. I urge you to unanimously shut this down. To all the folks in the overflow, standing in the back, and those watching on TV, let me say this: We hear you, Council. I appreciate you, and thank you very much for your consideration. Benita proud.
Thank you very much. And next be Fred Forbes, followed by Vicky Olson.
Good evening. For the record, Fred Forbes. Got a tough job here. Couple points. I, I was on the LPA at the time this was heard, and I was one of the two that gave the dissenting vote. My dissenting vote was really based on, I'm not comfortable with seeing wetlands and suburban moved over, and when it comes in the city, to moderate-density mixed use. That, and in fact, if we do that, Worthington, Hunter's Ridge, and a lot of other communities have that designation, and maybe we ought to tear down some of our buildings and build some big, bigger towers to replace them. Forgetting that, I believe, and this, there's been a number of people that I know that have read that Comp Plan Amendment many times, and every time they find it, they find something new. And it's at least a debatable point, that this amendment could apply throughout the city, as far as being able to build towers, anywhere you had that moderate-density mixed use. So, for one thing, if we were to go back and revisit this, which I really think is what needs to happen, it needs to be clear as to where this, where these towers could be built, if they ever were going to be built. I believe that what was presented here today clearly shows that the Comp Plan Amendment as proposed, and that map, should be turned down today. And when it comes back, then it can be, we can relook at it in the future. This isn't a time to fix something on the wing. Another, another point that I would make is that, and this, this is a question. I think that we've got this place filled with people. Clearly, up until a couple months ago, they did not realize what was going on. Now, I know we can say that, well, they're not interested in what goes on outside the gate of the community. But I think that the city needs to do a better job of getting out early what's going on. The other thing that I would, I still go back to that LPA hearing, it was like, it was presented like there was no zoning prior to when it came in the city. There was not a thorough presentation of the zoning. We got a good bit of that today, but it could even be even in more detail. So, I'd like to see that changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Vicky Olson, please come forward, and Jean Cuomo. Can you hear Jean? All right.
All set. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the council members, and a particular, and Mayor Nelson, and a particular thank you to Councilman Slata, who is not here, and considering his unfortunate personal circumstances, really appreciate that he's partaking.
Thank you for reminding me of that for a second.
Be awake.
Steven, are you there? Hello? We caught him. We caught him.
He knows he's there.
Oh, darn it. Go ahead, Vicky.
All right. I wanted to give him that special thanks. My name, for the, for the record, my name is Vicky Olson, and I do live in the Morano Community, which is in the northwest part of the colony at Pelican Landing. I would als, I am, I'm very grateful for this opportunity to speak to you regarding the Comprehensive Plan. But I would also like to mention to Council at this time, that I also plan to speak at your zoning meeting, which I believe is the item following next on your agenda. That would be the zoning item V11, or A on the agenda. And I would, because these issues are so intimately related, I would like to speak to you on the zoning issue as well.
That's not necessary. I'm getting shaking heads all over the place, but if you are on, on the record, on the zoning case, you can't speak at the zoning hearing, so. But anyway, that's okay.
Okay.
We see her, she's violating that, and we would like...
I beg your pardon?
Yeah. She can't, she's not a party of record in the zoning, so she can't speak to the zoning, and we would object to her doing so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, all right.
There you go.
Then, at this point, I would like to notice the Council, that we think your ordinance and policy of refusing to allow the public to speak at your council zoning meeting, unless they spoke at the original planning and zoning board meetings, are illegal, and we do plan to challenge your decision. But I will now respect your, my instructions, and go back to the Comp Plan, which is what I'm here to talk to you about now. I belong to a group known as the Coconut Road West Neighborhood Coalition. We are from a variety of diverse neighborhoods and voting jurisdictions. But we have in common a location that either borders or depends upon Coconut Road for ingress and egress to our neighborhoods, as we go about our daily lives. Our group is highly concerned about the WCI proposal to change the zoning, the Comprehensive Plan text and map, and the DRI to allow high-rises or any form of increased residential density in the Raptor Bay Coconut Village area. I would like to quote Florida Statute 163.3178, which reads in part, "It is the intent of the legislature that local government comprehensive plans restrict development activities, where such activities would damage or destroy coastal resources, and that such plans protect human life and limit public expenditures in areas that are subject to destruction by natural disaster, whether it be a Category 1 or a Category 5." Changing, changing, an annexation agreement with a single developer is no reasonable or legal basis for changing an entire city's comprehensive plan. In fact, this does seem like illegal, it seems illegal, and is contract zoning. A comprehensive plan is supposed to include long-term planning, extensive study and scrutiny, with serious consideration of how it will impact the surrounding neighborhoods, Lee County, Astero, as well as Benita Springs. I was very impressed at your council meeting on January 20th, when, when I listened along with you to the presentations that you made that evening. You talked about your sustainability strategy for the city. You talked about your master circulation traffic plan for the city. And you also talked about your citywide pedestrian and bicycle master plan. I was extremely impressed about the amount of time, effort, and diligent study that you put into those subjects. However, I was disappointed to see now, at this point, that that sort of consideration and consultation has simply not occurred in this case. And we're, those of us who live on Coconut Road are kind of wondering why. So, in conclusion, please follow the true principles of comprehensive planning for all the areas of our city. Our group urges you to vote no on the WCI requested changes for Raptor Bay, and thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. It's time for Jean Cuomo, and followed by Chris Olney. You okay? Okay, Jean, Chris Olney, are you here? Come on, Chris. And then, followed by Jennifer Starnes.
She's not here.
Jennifer Starnes is not here. Annette Miller. Okay, you may after him. All right? Come on up, Chris.
I was just gonna wait for Debbie, just gonna put up a PowerPoint and have a copy for you. For the record, my name's Chris Olney. I live at 23250 Eldorado, Eldorado Boulevard in Benita Springs. We are part of unincorporated Lee County, and so, but we are a member of the Coconut Road West Neighborhood Coalition. We are a 2,000-foot neighbor to the Raptor Bay Pelican Landing RPD, unlike, again, that Ms. Montgomery said that they didn't have any neighbors back at one of your previous It's been a huge task, since the beginning of the year, kind of getting a grasp of what's been going on, and, and I jumped on board through with Vicky Olson, and I've really taken it upon the aspect of the traffic, certainly surrounding this issue, and have done a lot, many hours of research towards this. WCI has actually been very helpful. Barry Ernst copied off some traffic studies, so that, very appreciative for him. I was getting it from the Lee County Traffic Office, as well as the Florida DOT, anyway, but they've been very, very nice at sharing that information. That said, I'd just like, you've heard a lot about the coastal high-hazard areas, but we haven't heard really much about the data of the traffic studies that have been presented to you, and again, as a portion of what you're basing your decisions upon. So, that's what I'd like to just share with you today. Florida Statute, this year, 388.06, Developments Regional Impact, basically because of its character, magnitude, or location, would have a substantial effect upon the health, safety, or welfare of citizens of more than one county. So, that obviously transcends across Lee, as well as Astero. But then also, within the Florida statutes, local, local monitoring. The local government issuing the development order is primarily responsible for monitoring the development and enforcing the provisions of the development order. Local governments shall not issue any permits or approvals, or provide any extensions of services, if the developer fails to act in substantial compliance with the development That said, the traffic monitoring requirements, as per the Pelican Landing DRI, designed in cooperation with the review agencies, state that the traffic monitoring should be done at existing PM, peak hour, peak season intersection, and road segment traffic volumes. And then also provide a forecast of PM, peak hour, peak season, intersection, and road segment traffic volumes. Originally back in 1994, this was to be done every year. I understand you all changed that to a biannual process, which, so now, the forecast will be a two-year forecast. That's provided. That said, found a document looking at the methodology. How do they go about taking the data for this traffic monitoring report? PM, peak hour counts are from, defined as 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Will be conducted at all intersections. Peak hour counts will be adjusted to reflect peak season conditions, using the Lee County 1994 traffic volume report, and that is factored to 1995 peak season, using historic growth factors from the traffic volume report. Peak season adjustment factors from the traffic volume report will also be applied. There's adjustments, there's factoring. If there was actual data being taken in peak PM, peak season, there may not be quite an argument against the data that's been presented to you. That said, I was an airline pilot before, and I certainly know our passenger emplaments out at RSW. Just take a look at, since 1995, in March, 286,000-plus passengers emplained at RSW today, in March, peak season. In 2015, 596,000-plus passengers. That's a 208% increase in passenger emplaments. I'm sure that it's had an impact on our traffic. And then also, your, the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, done by Stanley Smith, the Population Program Director, is just showing also what their projection estimates for Lee County, 17.6 population growth diluted across Lee County in five years. I think you all would agree that our population growth in our area, particularly of Coconut Point, has been substantially more than that, and, and I would argue that our rates have been much higher, not only, not only in our area, certainly comparatively speaking to the rest of Lee County. So, there's a manipulation of the statistics. No actual PM, peak time, peak season data, per the DRI. As I said, it would be tough to argue. The use of factored and adjusted data not specific to the area evaluated. And then, in their traffic report here, the forecast for 2017, quotes, "Since most, if not all, segments experienced a negative growth rate, a 2% year growth rate was applied to all road segments." I think you'd be kind of surprised that that type of growth rate was used. Now, the data collection, too. It's not peak season. The 2015 report done at the end of July, August 18th. 2013 report, September 16th. September 19th data was collected. 2011 report, August 22nd, 29th, September 6th. You all, Mayor Nelson, you've been here for a long time. You know what our peak season is, and you know what our slowest time of season is. I love Mark Twain, there are lies, there are damn lies, and then there are statistics. Quote him again. But I, I found this document, too, sir, to present to you all as well, and this was from Andy Getch, 1998 Annual Traffic, in regard to the 1998 Annual Traffic Monitoring Report, dated October 26, 1998, that, "Within this document, the raw data was adjusted to peak season in accordance with the established methodology. It is suggested that for future monitoring reports, the data should be collected at the project entrances and Coconut Road in the peak season, to obtain a more accurate measurement of peak season conditions." This was in 1998, 18 years ago. In 18 years, that couldn't have happened. I, it, it's just unbeknownst to me, and by the way, the end of the document, you see who has CC'd with this, is the Lee County Assistant County Attorney, Donna Collins, as well as Maureen Swenson, who was at the time, I guess, the lead, Dan, Dan Trescott probably knows Maureen at the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council back then, and then John Hendrickson at David Plummer and Associates. So, how's this all relate with your, with your Comprehensive Plan and your traffic policy? Policy 124, "Review existing traffic impact methodology and guidelines and procedures for traffic impact studies and modify as appropriate. Address issues and problems with current transportation concurrency practices, et cetera." And Policy 125, "Policy 126 of your Comprehensive Plan, establish inter-local agreements and traffic methodology that address the cross-juridicial transportation impacts of development." Also, in regard to traffic and cooperation and planning, Objective 1.6 in your plan, "The city shall ensure cooperative planning with surrounding municipalities, counties, the Florida Department of Transportation, and the private sector." Policy 171, "When considering changes in land, land use densities and transportation programs, the city shall evaluate the effect upon traffic generation, levels of service, and the potential need for impact upon public transportation services." And then, political cooperation. Objective 2.2 of your plan, "Political intervention to provide better coordination of plans and policies, the City of Benita Springs shall initiate methods for dialogue and communication with other local governments to address issues which have an effect beyond the municipal boundaries of the city." And obviously, with all those different municipal boundaries along Coconut Road, this certainly pertains. Policy 221, "In order to address issues that cross jurisdictional boundaries, the city councils shall initiate and coordinate interactions with political counterparts in municipalities and counties in the region." I've reached out to our commissioners, and they all say, "This is a Benita Springs issue." And I, I just can't believe that there hasn't been, it seems to me like, this type of cooperation and... And I, I just can't believe that there hasn't been, uh, it seems to me like, uh, this type of cooperation and dialogue. Objective 2.3, "The city shall coordinate the impacts of its comprehensive plan upon the development in adjacent local governments, the regions, and the state." Just wanna highlight this, it hasn't been highlighted yet, uh, tonight. So, uh, basically to close, this is another Mark Twain, uh, quote there, "Do the right thing. It will gratify some people and astonish the rest." I asked, I asked that you, uh, certainly vote no for the text and also for your, uh, map changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Miller, please come forward. Mike Snyder, Mike Snyder, are you here? Okay, you're next. You give up, pass. Okay. And then after that, Ernie Parks.
I'm short. Sorry, I'm not very tall. I would like to thank all of you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my neighbors, those of us that live along the Coconut Road corridor. My name is Annette Miller, and I live in Eldorado Acres. A community directly neighboring the Raptor Bay property on two sides. We are a multi-generational, working-class community. The overwhelming majority of us live here year-round. We are residents of Lee County. We are your police officers, your firefighters, your teachers, and your construction workers. We are in the medical field. We work for you, for all of you. We need safe access to Coconut Road. We need to go to work, and our kids need to get to school. I'm not necessarily opposed to development, and I understand the need or the desire for economic growth and improvement within a city and its surrounding areas. I believe it's the job of our elected officials to take into consideration the true impact this project or any other project will have in the local community. In this case, our Coconut Road corridor. As a business brings, as a Benita Springs business owner, I recently attended the planning meetings for Benita Beach Road. And I was surprised to see conflicting ideologies. According to the Complete Streets Policy, Resolution 14043 adopted by the city, safe walking, biking, and driving options should be available for everyone. You also state the city will incorporate the goals and the policies of the Complete Streets in any of its comprehensive planned amendments, regardless of what a traffic, traffic study or multiple studies done during the least populated months of the year might say. And I understand these studies have been adjusted. But as mathematics major who also taught statistics for 10 years, if you want real data, you need to collect it. Otherwise, you're just manipulating statistics to say whatever you want. My neighbors and I know the truth. We want you to see the real numbers. Do not wait for the road to fail. Mr. Lockwood of Tool Design Group explained it best. There are three types of safety. Statistical safety, we know what the numbers say. We don't necessarily agree that they're accurate. Comfort, we aren't comfortable on Coconut Road as it is. It's two lanes, it's small. We have buses that go up and down the road with nowhere to stop. They stop on Coconut Road. Our kids stand on Coconut Road to wait for the bus. They go out in the road to see if the bus is coming. The bus, as I sent the papers around, there's nowhere for it to turn around. So guess where the buses all go? The entrance to Raptor Bay. That's how they turn around. So if the city believes Complete Streets policy is imperative to keeping the small-town feel, do these policies you adopted for Benita Springs not apply in this case? Is because Coconut Road and the communities you will impact the most are not actually in Benita Springs? Again, according to the very policy you adopted, you agreed to incorporate the needs of all users in your comprehensive plan amendments. I urge you to vote no to these plan changes. Although some may argue there is no increase in des- in density, they do agree there's a shift in that pink area that I didn't know about until tonight. And that shift is detrimental to Coconut Road, its surrounding area, and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ernie Parks, please come forward. And, um, Ogil is the last name? I can't say your first name?
Inez.
I was gonna say yes with an N in the middle. That's about the right thing. Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you, Ernie.
Uh, thank you to the council for letting us speak tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Ernie Parks. I'm a resident of Coconut Shores in Estero, so not a Benita resident. But, uh, I do live along that corridor of Coconut Road. I wrote this council a letter last week requesting that the council be consistent in the way they do planning here. And you've heard it from experts tonight in legal minds, and they're saying the same thing. I'm here to reiterate that publicly. And one of the things that you aspire to as a city is to be designated as a green city. From my perspective and many others, this project is not a green pr- project, no matter how you spin it. We who live on or adjacent to Coconut Shore, Coconut Road, whether Benita Springs residents or Estero residents, we have grave concerns, and you've heard them expressed by others tonight, about the traffic volumes and the ability to evacuate in the case of an emergency. I urge you to be consistent in your planning integrity. Say no to these proposed amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Inez. Pretty close. And then Alan Hergenhan? I'm getting worse at these names. Sorry.
Thank you so much for allowing us to express our opinions. My name is Inez Ogil, and I live in the colony in Pelican Landing. Bonita means beautiful in Spanish. We are one of the most beautiful areas in Florida. Estero Bay is the first Florida aquatic preserve, and it's our local environmental treasure. This preserve supports diverse, a diverse array of marine life that enhances Lee County's intricate and unique ecosystem. According to Bonita, the Bonita City Policy, and I quote, "Development adjacent to aquatic and other nature preserves and recreation areas shall protect the natural character and public benefit of these areas, including, but not limited to, scenic values for the benefit of future generations." It is obvious to most of us here that WCI's proposal for Raptor Bay and the pending week's fish camp ignores existing Bonita City policy. We are concerned with the increase of commercial and residential traffic that the proposed high-density would bring to Coconut Road. We are concerned about the effects this traffic will have in the evacuation of the high-hazard coastal area using that road as its only exit. Further, further, WCI's traffic study done in August on Coconut Road is laughable. We have experienced what that road is like during season, even without the proposed four high-rises and the 200 timeshare units to start the Raptor Bay project. In addition to this plan, Plan, WCI has already gained approval for building several more high-rises within the colony at Pelican Landing. WCI does not care about preserving our way of life, the environment, or what its destruction would mean for the future generations. But we do, and you should too. We are concerned about the irreparable damage to our community this plan would bring. And finally, we are concerned with the population density this project brings. Once again, this development ignores the aforementioned city policy. Personally, my husband and I chose Bonita Springs before, because of its natural beauty, respect for the environment, expansive views, and wide-open spaces. We used to live in the concrete maze that became Pelican Bay, a WCI community. We lived there for nine years. We experienced the destruction of the ecosystem on the coastline, the density, the traffic in that area that made us look for a better alternative. We came here because we like our way of life. Today, that way of life is in peril. We are asking you to be a responsible and a responsive city council to the needs and wants of the people you serve. The Bonita zoning board got it right. Any change, changes in land use at this point merely to fuel WCI's wrongful greed would undermine, if not destroy, Bonita's comprehensive plan forever. Vote no on these proposals, please, we beg you.
Thank you very much. Alan, come on forward. And followed by Walt Buckner.
My name's Alan Hergenhan. I'm a resident of Coconut Shores. Uh, my wife and I moved there 11 years ago. I didn't know if I was going to be able to speak tonight, and so I already gave my little speech there to all of you board members. But I hope that I'm given the opportunity here to speak and address a letter that was written by WCI's, uh, spokeswoman. When companies want to develop areas, it can be very confusing for the general public. And so when I made the, uh, the editorial that was published in both papers, Naples and Benita, I thought there that the ownership there was by WCI. I stand corrected on that. The area down by the week's fishing camp is owned by Estero Bay Marine Donovan and Sugar Mountain Development. They own the camp. WCI, though, is behind the development there at Raptor Bay. Now, in the editor, in the letter, they said that I provided some absolutely factually untrue statements. I asked the attorney here for WCI if she represented just WCI's. She said, "No, she also represents, uh, the owners of the Estero Bay Marine, et cetera." Seems like it's a bit of, of, of a conflict here to me. In the, in the response here that Laura Johnson made, she said, "Let me make it clear. WCI Communities is not a party to this project in any way." They do have control, have some input, because it seems like the four 22-story towers that they are going to be wanting to place on hold 14, 15, and 16, and the removal of part of the driving range. And what has been presented to the Planning Commission for the development on the week's fishing camp, exactly mirror the same type of buildings. So I, I wanted to set the record straight. I certainly didn't want to impose here, or, but I was confused.
Alan? Alan? Up here.
Oh.
Up here.
Well.
You're talking.
He's a CEO there, so I, I certainly didn't want to.
You can talk to him later. You can talk to us right now, okay?
I did not want to offend the CEO of WCI.
That's fine.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Walt Buckner, are you here? Come on up. Walt? No? Uh, Amelia Cor- yeah. Followed by Keith Campbell. Thank you, sorry.
I'm gonna say my name clearly, and my name is Amy Quaramba. And I am a candidate for the District 1 seat. And I can't wait to be in the soft seats instead of the hard seats back there. Uh, but I do, seriously, I want.
Trust me, these aren't that, that soft right now.
At least you have something behind you. And do you have coffee and donuts back there? Anyway.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
All right. No, I'll get, I'll get serious now. Um, I, first of all, I really wanna thank you for your service to, to the council and the community, and for being open to hear residents' views. I certainly understand how difficult it can be to weigh alternatives. Benita Springs is now at a crossroads. We are being asked to redefine the character of our city. I want to sustain what is special about our community so that Benita Springs can be the best place for all of us, for our families and businesses. Thanks to your efforts and to those of your predecessors, Benita Springs is a vibrant city with small-town charm. This description can even be found on our website. It is, in fact, the community vision. The vision is also reflected in our existing comprehensive plan of development. Permit me to read something to you from the Evaluation and Appraisal Report. We left our.
That's right. Uh, can somebody get that?
Yeah.
You weren't supposed to hear it, though.
Could we just stop the noise?
That's right, there you go.
Okay, sorry.
Carry on, Amy.
Permit me to read from the, uh, Evaluation and Appraisal Report. I call it EAR, but I guess you all call it E-A-R. Uh, which clearly describes the intent of our comprehensive plan. And this is important, and I'm quoting here. "The City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan is its Constitution for Development. It is the foundation upon which all land use decisions are based. It expresses the vision and the values of the community," unquote. "You are asked today to consider a change to our existing comp plan for the newly annexed property we call Raptor Bay. This is not just a routine incorporation of a Lee County land use designation into another closely related city category. If that were the case, then the designation to be considered would be suburban density and resource protection." Excuse me. "We also need to question whether more wide-ranging effects could come into play here with what is being proposed. It is a substantive change in our comprehensive plan, allowing for higher density with buildings towering over 20 floors in height along a coastal corridor with wetlands. I oppose such meaningful changes to the city's development plan, especially outside of a comprehensive, comprehensive plan review where citizens voice their preference for the, for the city landscape. We are in the midst of completing such a review, and no piecemeal adjustments should be considered. I am in opposition to both the concept of the Raptor Bay proposal and the process by which it was reviewed and initiated, including provisions in the annexation agreement. The people of our said city should decide what kind of community we want. The message here tonight is clear. We want to sustain our small-town city character. This is a policy decision for you, members of the council. You can vote for maintaining the beautiful city of Benita with its small-town charm, or you can vote for another vision, which is not supported by the community. Please vote with the people and vote no on this amendment to the comp plan, including the map and text changes which have not been fully vetted. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Keith Campbell, please. Keith, come on up. And, uh, Terrence, uh, Degendorf? Yep, there you are.
Thank you for serving. This is a marathon event here. I'll do this real quick. My wife and I purchased a place in Pelican Landing 13 years ago. That time, there was a, uh, comprehensive plan and a zoning. And I'm gonna just try to do it visually here. On the left, on this side are the citizens, and on this side are the developers. When we purchased here, that was the plan, and that was the zoning. And it's a level playing field, as you can see. Then comes, uh, the new WCI. When he describes it as "we," uh, that, that's a bit of a stretch. There's been numerous turnovers from, from the people who did all those things that he listed to start with. But they are mostly all hired in the last five to seven years. You have the top executives and the board. So if you turn around and say, "No, we're not gonna do what you're asking if you do that," you're basically saying they came, you're saying to them, "You came in here a few years ago, and you knew what the zoning was. You knew what the comprehensive plan was. You took the job under those conditions." And now what you're asking is, they're asking a situation that's gonna drop us down, the citizens. It's gonna be, as you, they so eloquently pointed out, we are disadvantaged. What I'm asking you, obviously, is that you say, "Keep that, that playing field level." But you're not gonna kill them, you're not gonna bankrupt them. They took the job knowing what existed. And I don't think it's a terrible thing to go back and say, "Okay, guys, you took a job, go at it. I wish you, uh, the best, and I hope you vote no."
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Go, Terrence? And then after you, Terrence, there's gonna be Richard. Richard, uh, I'm having a hard time seeing here. What does it say?
Richard Ferrara.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. And what I'm about to say is going to sound eerily familiar, because I sent it to you in an email, uh, five days ago. And I wanna thank the two that replied to me on that. My name is Terrence T. Degendorf, nicknamed Buck. My wife, Ann, and I have lived in Benita Springs for the last 11 years. And we chose to live in Florida. I think that makes us first-generation Florida. I don't match the eight. We specifically chose the Gulf Coast. The East Coast is nothing but concrete high-rises, uh, and it's way overcrowded. And it favors sunrises, we favor sunsets. So we like Benita Springs. We chose to live here and vote here. What we would like to do is see that Benita stays a balanced and nature-friendly area. We oppose overdeveloping the area, especially with high-rises, and especially if they're gonna be put in the wrong area. What I would ask you is, what do you see in Florida? When your friends come from the north to visit you, what do they wanna see? Probably not. Probably not the buildings. In fact, when your friends come, what do you show them? Probably the beaches. And then you live here, so what do you want this area to look like? I don't think you would want to live right next door to what is being asked for today. So I would suggest do not reward WCI for changing these plans and asking for all these Do not change the comp plan. What I was interested in is that WCI did a very slick presentation, very professional, exactly what I would expect from a company with that kind of funding and with talented resources. And I appreciate the CEO coming here when he doesn't normally come to these sorts of sessions, but I can guarantee that when he and his staff are here, the rest of us will be here also, something we may not normally do. He gave a pitch that included a lot of little paragraphs, a lot of highlighted cherry-picked comments that supported this path along which he thinks would prove that you owe him some kind of a yes vote today. To me, it gave exactly the opposite effect. He's taken advantage of, "We do a change here. We give you a concession here. We annex here." And they just keep walking down that path and setting the hook deeper and deeper. You're not obligated to him or to WCI to give him a yes vote just because there were prior steps along that path. It is not too late to say, "Let's stop. Let's back up. Let's look it over." If you vote no, it's not the end of the process. They'll be back here. So will we. If you vote yes, it's forever. And that's a decision that we hope you take very, very seriously. So please do not make this change in the balance. Please do not betray your obligation to your residents who are here today. You would be putting way too much dense population in a small area, and I'm a Marine Corps veteran and a tour in Vietnam, and we had a phrase for it, which I've cleaned up for tonight, which is, "You're trying to put eight pounds in a five-pound bag." Please do not put eight pounds in a five-pound bag. Thank you for the opportunity.
Richard Ferrara, thank you very much. Richard Ferrara, followed by Jim Brunel. Excuse me. Thank you very-- and, Richard, I do know who you are.
Mr. Mayor, it's always a pleasure to see you, members of the council. I won't ask for equal time, but we're not supposed to use this podium for political reasons. This is a petition, Mr. Mayor.
Take a word for it.
I'd like to sense there's a legislative session of over 200 signatures. Some are residents, some are snowbirds, but all are concerned about Coconut Road access, evacuation, and the wetlands. So I'd like to give that to Audrey, if you would. I would also like to present as a true and representative sample of the intersection and the signs indicating no outlet going into the fish streets on Spring Creek Road. There's no way out except by water in case of evacuation hurricane emergency. This is also a picture of Coconut Road and Spring Creek Road, the intersection, which, by the way, I'll talk about in a second. It also has a slats sign on it that says, "No Outlet." And I can tell you right now, there's over 1,500 people that live there. So I'd like to enter that, if you would. Thank you. I'd like to say for the record, the petition, very explicit, it says, "Please deny both the text and the map of the comp plan for three reasons. One, traffic. Data collection, generally in planning, you do a data collection, data analysis, planning, and then you deliver a service supposedly. In this case, the data collection was faulty. You're doing a traffic study on an off-peak season, not reflective. So if your data analysis is going to be skewed because the data collection wasn't proper or not accurate, and you're planning on, you're building a house on mud if you don't get the right statistics." So I think that plan was done faulty, not intentionally, but being developed, developers being who they are, are in the business to stay in business and make a profit. And there's nothing wrong with that, except that, "Let's do it the right way." Hopefully, you'll-- I'm not going to reiterate what others have said, except that the people in Spring Creek Village, who I can speak for, we had a meeting the other night, we filled that petition within hours. So it's not my personal opinion, but the opinion of an awful lot of people, including our neighbors in Astero. And that's democracy you see out here. And the city fathers have made decisions in the past, including me when I was on the council. One of the things I regret is that we've changed the comp plan so many times. It seems like when an issue comes up, we change the complex, the comp plan, the master plan, to meet the issue. The whole purpose of the master plan, the comp plan, is to notify everyone. Developers, people coming into the city, to do their due diligence. They read the comp plan. They know what their restrictions are. They know what our goals and objectives are. They know how far we will go in allowing them to develop, and where to develop, and what kind of development is compatible with the neighborhood. So I would urge the council, since this is your decision, the traffic on Coconut Road, Coconut Road, there's three things about traffic. Education, which is signage, 15 mile an hour, 25 mile, those are educational pieces. Engineering and enforcement. Well, let's talk about engineering. I'm not an engineer, but I've sat on traffic in my capacity as a senior police official, sat on many traffic commissions. I've evaluated hundreds of cases of traffic accidents being mostly composed of poor engineering. That's the main, one of the main causes of accidents is roads that are poorly engineered for the speed limits. And I can tell you right now that Coconut Road, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not trying to talk as an expert, sometimes an expert's somebody from out of town, but generally, the rule is, a person who knows probably more than the average layperson. So let me give you my opinion. It's poorly engineered, and some of the things that WCI didn't bring out. When you take a right or left onto Coconut Road going westerly, there's about 100 acres on the right-hand side that's not even developed yet. Then you come up to an entrance into that property, and there's an island right in the middle that narrows down to, you know, to one lane on each side. And on the south side of that is a development between the Elks and the pumping station that's going to be developed. The four sales signs are on there. So if that's all developed and allowed by Astero, as you traverse up westerly, you come to the intersection of Spring Creek, photographs I just admitted, and Spring Creek Road and Coconut Road, and the road begins to narrow when it should be expanding. It's a mess. It's a traffic hazard, and these people were right when they said it was a hindrance of public safety. Number two, talk about evacuation. What Mr. Bass didn't say, and probably didn't even know, was that 10 years ago, the people in Spring Creek Village asked WCI if we could use only in emergencies the WCI property as an evacuation route in case of hurricane or disaster, and we were flatly refused. WCI said, "No." We inquired later on, I inquired a few weeks ago, and they said it wasn't in the DRI. What's that got to do with it? I was a co-commander of emergency services in a big city adjacent to the capital city, and I can tell you, in a dire emergency, you do away with all these everyday regulatory rules. The commanders take over. You forget about whether cars are licensed. You forget about, you want to get people out of the area into a safe area. That's the main objective. The other objective is to prevent further damage. Can you imagine these towers going in, all this development on Coconut Road, and the people who are going to live in the high-rises, let's face it, they're not poor. They don't come from some, it's not a, this isn't a Section 8 housing, okay? They're going to have two cars. So it's just crazy. It really is, to add more vehicles. And nobody's going to wait till 2040 for that road to be, I mean, my great-grandkids will be driving by that time. So let's get down to the evacuation. There is no evacuation, and that's a critical point for your evaluation on changing that plan, changing the, you know, allowing that development to persist. Lastly, the wetlands. Now, I understand that they did some pretty good, some pretty good presentation on that, and I understand also that the wastewater will not go into Astero Bay, will be, you know, backwatered. But how much more can Astero Bay take? This council was courageous on a number of environmental issues. Okay? Fracking, green buildings, the fertilizer ordinance. The last evaluation by Dr. Beaver was that the phosphorus levels in Astero Bay are going down. Why? Because this council took action. And I remember dealing with WCI when I was on the city council about water transfer. People in the fish streets were getting, their backyards were filling up with water because of some engineering that was done. One of the councilmen named Ben Nelson had put a DRI restriction, and that restriction said, "No more development in that area unless that water was mitigated to those, mitigated to a point where the neighborhood would approve." We didn't approve, we didn't object to the townhouses going up because the water transfer and pollution was mitigated.
Richard, you're working on 15 minutes here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I wanted to get that, I wanted to get my points.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
No, it's all right. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right. You want to wrap up?
With that, I'll close, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jim Brunel? Jim Brunel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jack Guerein?
Yes.
G-U-E-R-E-I-N?
Yes.
I am the butcher of Benita here on these names, I got to tell you. Come on up. And then after that, Harold Streika.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jack Guerein, and I've been in the building industry for probably 40 years.
All right.
I've been through this process numerous times, and I'm really not up to speed on everything these folks want to do at WCI. But I do know that if I went to my attorney and said, "Here's what I want to do. I want to change the zoning, number one, from single-family to what you call moderate density." But instead of moderate density, they're putting up high-rises, 22-story buildings. How do you call that moderate density? And we're going to put it down, a one-lane entry road going down Coconut Point Road. You'd say, "Get out of here. No place in the world would do that. They won't change the zoning for you. They won't let you put a four-high-rises next to a hotel out of a one-lane road. They just won't do it." So I'd say, "Well, let's go to the planning person first, the town planner." So the town planner would laugh at us. When I sat here and listened to this nice young lady, the town planner, and she said, "There's no problem with the density of the cars going down that road." And then the attorney here thanked her for it. I understand why she would thank her, because that's just a ridiculous statement. Everyone knows that road is crowded now. And I, as I say, I wasn't up to speed with everything. So I'm playing golf the other day, and about we finished, there's 20 guys sitting around a table. So I'm trying to get an explanation, how that could possibly happen, and they're going, "Oh, you know, it's politics," you know? I said, "There's no way the mayor and the city council would approve something like that. I just don't believe it. Why would they possibly give them a zoning change?" And they go, "It's politics. WCI gets whatever they want. It's politics." And I say, "No, there's no way that these fellows would vote yes on that." So I just want to sit here to the end, and I want to listen to every one of you guys say no. And if somebody say yes, I'm going to want to talk to you. I'm going to want to talk to you for a long time, because you know--
Get ready.
You know what?
Get ready. I'll be here, okay? Finish up.
You've made up your mind already?
I'm just saying, be prepared.
Okay, okay. But I'm just saying, this whole thing doesn't pass the smell test. It just doesn't.
Got you. Thank you very much. Let's see, Harold Streika, Strayer, or something like that? Left, left. Rick Steinmeier. There you go, Rick. And then after that, Donald Misrack.
Oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. Have we heard enough yet? Rick Steinmeier. My family's been paying taxes in Benita Springs for 67 years. I don't think anybody can beat that record. I think we can blame all this on greed. The city went after the Hyatt Regency, and they decided to annex as much property as they could because it would help Pelican Landing and one of our councilmen, Steve McIntosh, because he lives in Pelican Landing, and it put feathers in his hat, and now we're into this situation created by greed, which I believe came out of, he went across all the rules that were in existing as a two-mile setback and stuff, and now we're into this whole great big mess. And April Fool's Day, April 6th, we'll have, if I have my way, we'll have five different people sitting up in a dire house. I'll be the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donald, Donald Misrack? No? No? Barbara Misrack? Anita Heller? No? Donald Morangello? Yep, there he is. Followed by Jimmy Weeks. Jimmy, you there? Okay, you come after him, if you would.
I just wanted to share with you that you probably realize there are many people out here, myself included, who have sat in seats such as yours and have done it for years and years and years. And in a lot of ways, it's a very thankless job, but the irony is, you're sitting there, and you're still here with us. The thing is, tonight, you've received a lot of information that I sense you might have been completely aware of. The bottom line is, you are now aware of it, and I trust very, very strongly that people like you will do the right thing, probably because you love Benita as much as we who have moved here have learned to love it. And the bottom line to it is, you have an opportunity now to take what we used to say to kids in school, to take your pencil and use the eraser and write what you might have done without knowing all the information that was given to you tonight. So we're putting a lot of faith in you, and we're watching, and we hope you will care enough to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jimmy, come on forward. And Susan Chamberlain? No? Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Mary Nelson. How you doing?
Good, Jim.
Committee, how's it going?
Good. Good.
It's so great to hear the family name mentioned as much as it is throughout here in the history. And I want to keep that going forward as much as I can. Coconut Road, I know a lot about Coconut Road. I'm nervous, so just bear with me. I'm one of the guys that don't get up to speak ever before in front of the committee. But I think it's important on this issue. And the meaning, and the reason is, it doesn't affect Weeks Fish Camp right now, but it will down the road. Listening to all this talk, all these people saying things, I wrote down some notes, and I'm thinking, density. Density is a very powerful word now. To me, that density equals privacy. That means that people like me and all that cannot go into places, once they get approved, for the density to put up the high rises. Weeks Fish Camp, I would love to keep that open to the public. I'm trying everything I can to fight to keep the boat ramp open. Long the boat ramp, need parking, you know, they might get that. So I don't want the high rises there for that reason. Because once they get their high rises, it's a dominant effect, and the Weeks Fish Camp will get the high rises, and we're going to lose public access. When you lose public access, you lose history. And that means a lot to the community. I look around here, I don't see no condos. I see history paintings on the wall. That means a lot to Benita. That looks very familiar. So I just want to bring that out there. Coconut Road, big issue. I was there when we gave the permission to move that hotel in. Great, you know, got the hotel in, but they moved Coconut Road, rearranged it, made it harder for me to get home. I got a bike path out of it, down Coconut Road. I'm still going around bicyclists on the road because they don't know it's a bike path. Now they want to put condos further down the same stretch of road to the north of the property? That's the only access they're going to have? I don't think the road can take the heavy equipment, the construction to even build that yet. You got stop corners, I mean, I was there when the high was being built, and the construction traffic, everything else was very dangerous. They were lined up on the road because of construction delays and stuff like that. That's one thing. Get it built. Now that it's built, all right, it's, it's going. When the high was built, I had several incidents of trying to leave my property at Weeks Fish Camp when I lived there, that I had to go into oncoming traffic because all the cars parked all down the road. They had no parking and nothing like that. So we do have a major traffic issue to build these condos. And it has to do with construction, traffic's going to increase, and the, the height, when they have an event, I, it's going to be a jam, it's going to be a traffic jam, because I know, but they have a lot of traffic in and out of there. So I just hope that I, I'm not here to stop construction at all. I'm in the construction industry. I, I make a living on it. I am here to preserve the history. And if it means to stop the density so that we can preserve the history, that's what I'm here for. That's what I want to make known. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. Susan Chamberlain, please come forward. And Judy Nihart, you here? All right, good.
Susan Chamberlain, I live at 23831 Napoli Way in the colony. I go on Coconut Road at least 10 times a day. I'm asking you to please protect the green mangroves and the open space that the Pelican Landing designers decades ago agreed on. They had, south of Coconut Road, a mixed density with high rises, single-family and low rises. And north of Coconut Road were time shares and a golf course. I rode my bike on that golf course, there's a path through there, and I used to see that eagle until he left. Someone spoke to that. And that's a tragedy that we lost our eagle. The fact that golf courses may no longer be profitable is no reason to change the actual density, thereby putting in jeopardy, first, the safety of the mangroves, the flora and the fauna that live there, and the traffic. And I see those children peeking out of El Dorado every time I go by on the early morning. I see those children looking for the buses, and I think, how can they have that closeness to a major road with the traffic on it as it is? And three, the safety of the people. Living in a coastal, high-hazard area, I can't imagine that we would increase that density of people. I wrote to each of you council members to say, and I wanted to reiterate in person, this is your moment in our small place in history. The time when you become the shoulders that the future generations of Benita Springs will stand upon. Please stand strong and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy, please come forward. And then Scotty Wood, is Scotty here?
My name is Judy Nihart. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Unit Owners Committee of Pelican Landing, which represents the voting representatives of the 45 individual communities within Pelican Landing. Our group is totally opposed to the changes to the Benita Springs comp plan to change the Raptor Bay Golf Course land into four high-rise towers or any other residential property. The advertising literature for the Raptor Bay Golf Course says, and I quote, Hyatt Regency Coconut Point Resort and Spa, in partnership with WCI Communities, Inc., sought the expertise of golf legend Raymond Floyd to design 18 holes of golf that would make history as the first course in the world to receive Audubon International's Gold Sanctuary certification. Under the guidance of Audubon International, we have developed an ecological design that preserved the most valuable habitats on site and restored nearly 25 acres of wetlands. With no residential sites on the property, the natural surroundings encouraged the appearance of protected wild creatures, including the American bald eagle, great blue hare and snowy eaglets, and even the very shy whooping crane. I'll repeat a few of those words. Preserved valuable habitats. Restored wetlands. No residential sites on the property. Encouraged the appearance of protected wild creatures. What happened? Four 225-foot towers. What wild creatures want to share their protected space with those? I'm sure the Audubon designation does not call for massive towers or any other development in the wetlands. If WCI chose to preserve this coastal area when the golf course was built, they should not be allowed to reverse that course now. Vote no on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, Ron Peer, followed by Martha Simons. Ron, are you still here?
Good evening. How you guys doing? Everybody's all right? Can I have a half hour?
I'll let this crowd decide.
I got to try to talk fast because a lot of things here I've got in my mind. Number one, I'd like, I'd like to make a point of order. The agenda tonight has, has thrown me off, some others have mentioned it as well, because the public comment was not listed in the first four or five areas. And that would have helped a lot of people here tonight, because a lot of people have already left, they were leaving probably an hour, an hour and a half ago. I passed 50 that were going back to the parking lot on my way in. And it would have helped them in this regard. You have on the agenda 12B, part of the attorney's report. And if someone had only a certain amount of time tonight set aside to visit you folks, they would have been able to have addressed that issue early on, before you started addressing anything else below the customary public comment section, which is right after roll call, I think. So, you know, I'm beginning to think that, I've heard Trump now for the past year or thereabouts, and a hell of a guy. I like to say that he's, well, I, I like to say actually that I talked him, taught him everything he knows. And the only difference is that he's got $10 billion, and I'm still working.
Somewhere along here, you're going to talk about this case, right? Because.
No, no, I'll get on there.
There needs to be some connectivity here pretty quick.
There's, there's some need to snicker in the back, too. The, you know, we used to have public access at the marina down there, and for about six years, public access for boats. And for about six years.
That's a different site, you know that, right?
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. But it, but it played off of one of the sites that has been mentioned several times.
Trying to keep your eye on the prize here.
It is on the ball.
Good, good.
Help me along when you, whenever you feel necessary. The, and that was dicked around with for six or eight years that I know, communication going on back and forth to the, with the county. And what I'm getting at here is that now it has erupted or surfaced again, the idea of having access to the, for a boater at that general vicinity. And again, what was available at one place, used to be at Weeks, Weeks, then Weeks again.
Okay, I'm going to have to interrupt you for a second. All right, pal, you with the sign, you got my attention finally. Stop. All right? Thank you. Ron, go ahead.
Okay. So that went back, and we never got anywhere with it. However, let me say that I feel sorry, I've been down here for about 25 years now in Pelican Landing, and I'm so thankful for this marvelous crowd that showed up tonight with a lot of brown, brain power and, and the handsomest guys in Benita and, and the most beautiful women as well. This is like a situation where you folks should vote against all three or reject all three items tonight. Six, you're welcome. That would be six A, five, seven A, and 12B.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Good. Thank you, Ron.
And thank you.
Thank you very much. Martha Simons, you still here? Come on up. Followed by Linda Skelly.
I know, I know it's been a long night for y'all. For one thing, well, Martha Simons, for the record, former city council, District 5. It might be good to go back to doing this, like on a Monday, we did the zoning and the comp plans, and then the Wednesday, we did, okay, you get the picture, right? It leads for an awfully long meeting. Okay. One thing that you heard people speaking about was contract zoning. You did contract, well, what is that? What does that mean? Why is that bad? Okay? Your annexation agreement was, we volunteer, a voluntary agreement to come into the city. And of course, you know, the people who live in Pelican Landing here, you couldn't be prouder of them. I wish they were here every meeting. But they voluntarily came into the city north of Coconut Road. So yay, yay team. All right. More people in the city. A beautiful property, Raptor Bay. I don't know where the raptor flew away, but it's Astero Bay. Anyhow, okay, back to contract zoning really quickly. It has been determined to be unconstitutional in some courts, because what happens is that the body, your body, the decision-making body, has been stripped of the policing powers of rezoning. Okay? So that's why people are saying, ah, not good contract zoning. Okay? It may or may not be the case, some courts in Florida say, you know, in this case, it's okay, in that case, it's not. But I think as the people who sit here to help to interpret what your citizens say about the vision they want through your comp plan, what we've done over many, many years, that you have the authority to be able to say, our comp plan says we're a green city. You've heard all these things that people have said. You have the right to say no. The annexation agreement has not stripped you, and if it has stripped you of your policing powers to rezone and to make an interpretation of your comp plan, then it's been ill-advised and illegal, in my opinion. Anyhow, I think you're, you know, on the cusp of doing some great things in this town. We've got the year coming up. I think you need to address one thing in your comp plan, and that is that Astero Bay isn't addressed thoroughly enough in our comp plan. This project would change the skyline of Astero Bay. And as the representative appointed by the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council to the Astero Bay Agency on Bay Management, I for one don't remember seeing this coming before, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe their attorney can tell me I'm wrong, maybe I missed that meeting. I hope that's the case. But I don't remember seeing it coming before the Astero Bay Agency on Bay Management Board that we recommend it to the Regional Planning Council. So that is of concern to me, and the combat period going up to DEO is of concern to me. I can't tell you how impressed I am with Dan Trescott here. He is one of your national experts on hurricane, hurricane evacuations, rising tides, sea level rise. I had him here 10 years ago to talk to this city council, as the mayor may remember, about what was going on with our coastal areas, about how important is that we do not develop in the coastal high-hazard area. And gosh, 10 years later, thank God, these people have come here to say, we don't want that, it's in our comp plan says, don't do it. I also, Jim Beaver, who has been our advice on our water task force here in the city, also offered the city a free adaptation plan. And I asked him to please call one of the council members in District 1 to please take that upon himself, because he was doing sustainability now, because somehow my two years working on the Green City Plan got turned over to him. So I had asked, you know, hey, the city could have a free adaptation plan, we need to do that. Now we find ourselves at a time where we don't have the analysis of where the coastal high-hazard areas really are. We aren't even in sync with what Lee County has. So even in that text amendment that you had in 2003 that says, you know, you're going to reallocate from one coastal high-hazard area to another, those coastal high-hazard areas don't even fit. Okay? One doesn't have all coastal high-hazard areas. So even if you did approve, which I don't think you're going to, because I think you're too smart for that. Okay, it's also silly season, it's election season, and then things can happen. But I think you're too smart. You know, I think you see that this does not fit our comp plan. You've got expert testimony. And I would say also, if you remember, Mayor, we had, and, and Ms. Montgomery was here too, I think, we had a case called Race Track. It was a fuel station over on Benita Beach Road, in which former council member, actually mayor, who had had experience in the comp plan, both developing it and working with it, was rendered as a expert witness in lay planning. And if we get to the zoning meeting, I'd like to be rendered as an expert witness in lay planning because of my representation. He was on the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, as I have been, and also in the Astero Bay Agency on Bay Management. So I did read the memo from our city attorney that there weren't, the, the citizens who spoke didn't have any expert planning experience. And I would say that sitting in that seat for eight years, listening to stuff like this, and reading, and going to Urban Land Institute and all that kind of stuff, that I do as a layperson could be rendered as an expert witness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda Skelly, are you here? Oh, there he is.
I apologize for my poor handwriting.
Penmanship.
Yes, sir. I apologize for that.
You're not a penmanship expert, are you?
I'm Linda Shelly, special counsel to WCI from Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney Tallahassee office. And I'd like to speak briefly to the coastal high-hazard area that has been raised. The essence of what is happening in this case is a transfer of density from one part of the Pelican Landing's DRI to another part of the Pelican's Landing DRI. It is not an increase in density. The data and analysis that was prepared by your staff in support of the amendment and transmitted, that you voted for and that was sent through the state review process, supports the move of these units from one part of the DRI in the coastal high-hazard area to another part of the DRI in the coastal high-hazard area. That is not an increase in density. The annotation that has been referenced is, has been explained by the staff, but I want to reiterate that it specifically allows the transfer. And I quote a, something from Mr. Swings' letter in response to the Village of Astero issues, that the administrative section of the comprehensive plan states that, quote, "Any provision of the plans specifically construed in accordance with an annotation may not be reinterpreted or modified except by a formal plan amendment." Goes on to indicate that your city attorney concurs that you don't just change that interpretation, that it's okay to transfer within the coastal high-hazard area from one place to another, that it doesn't constitute an increase. I also want to reference Section 1633178. In the Tallahassee universe in which I have operated, this provision is referred to as the safe harbor. And that is because if you do the things that are in the 1633178, you will be found in compliance with state coastal high-hazard provisions. It is not the opposite, that if you don't do that, you won't be found in compliance. And so I think that's a clarification that you would see if you read those words. But more to the point, as Mr. Trescott knows, because he was the DRI reviewer. words. But more to the point, as Mr. Trescott knows, because he was the DRI reviewer for the, uh, Pelican Landing DRI, um, for many years. Uh, and by the way, if I'm a pioneer, he gets to be a pioneer too. I think that just means you've been around a long time. But on the issue of hurricane preparedness, in your development order, number 15, and we're looking at number 16 later this evening, under hurricane preparedness, you have set out the mitigation that is required. And it has to do with a, a generator and the electricity and all sorts of things at a gateway, gateway elementary school, which has been done. And there are three provisions in the DO that you have issued for this project that's, that relate to how do you mitigate for hurricane preparedness. And you have a statement in your development order. Conditions C1 through C3, which are the ones about mitigation, address the hurricane mitigation requirements for the initial 4,050 units. The total number of approved units is 3,912. In other words, if we want to talk about hurricane mitigation, it has already been accomplished by the development order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, John Wojcak? John? No? How about, uh, Mike Delati? I'm saying these are like really bad. All right, Mike, how close did I get?
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Mike Delat, professional engineer with Grady Minor. Uh, just wanted to make a couple of clarifications on the drainage, uh, issues that have been mentioned tonight. But I'd like to attest that the, uh, the project is a self-contained water management system. Uh, the discharge is through a control structure out to the bay and not to county-owned facilities or city-owned facilities. Um, any modifications to that area by redeveloping it would require modification of existing environmental resource permits, which would require, uh, nutrient loading and attenuation evaluation. So I think those issues would be addressed by the Water Management District.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, I don't have any other cards. Did I miss anybody? Anybody out there? Didn't get a chance? All right, good. Nobody popped up. So, uh, he did. Pop. Stretching. Uh, all right, uh, we're gonna go ahead. Audrey, at this time, do we, uh, do we have a wrap-up on this?
Um, sure.
Uh, staff, did you, did you, did you have anything, uh, to say at the end of this? Do you have any rebuttal, anything, anything you want to address?
I guess I'll just go through a couple, for the record, Jaclyn Ginsen, I'll just go for a couple.
A little closer, Jac.
A couple of items. Um, and then we'll relate to, you know, the city's experts and then the property owners' experts. Um, I just want to state with the LPA vote, there was a statement where it was a five approval to a, to denial. Regarding the public comment section, oh, sorry, the DEO comment section, per state statute, we do follow that for the process of the small, oh, sorry, the state expedited review comments. So, um, with DEO's comments, the letter that they gave me was a faxed copy on one date and then I also put in the packet the hard copy that I received. So that's why there are two copies with two different date stamps. Um, regarding the EAR and the coastal high hazard inconsistencies, staff agrees. That's why we think the EAR process is so important. Um, so that's one item that we will hopefully be able to look into if EAR is adopted by council. Uh, the public hearing notice for applications, I know the public was a little, um, had some questions about how that is done for the comprehensive plan amendment process. Our codes and state statute requires the notification in the newspaper. Um, so the processes are different for each application. The plan development notices are required, again, in the newspaper and also within 375 feet of the property, the DRI, because the way we're processing it is only required on the city council agenda. So we are following state statute and our land development code for that. Um, there was a comment about density with wetlands under the proposed amendment. Again, wetlands have a one unit per 20 gross acre calculation, which is the same as your resource protection category. There was also a concern that if we, if council approved the tax change for the height, that we could allow this anywhere in the moderate density mixed use plan development. That is incorrect because the height exceeding is if you receive vested rights determination within the timeframe allowed under our administrative section of the comprehensive plan, or if you are party to that specific annexation agreement. So if anyone else wanted to exceed that height limitation, you'd have to file a text amendment as well. It's not guaranteed by this action. Relative to Coconut Road, again, staff was just stating the level of service for that road, but we'll also have the property owners' traffic consultant address that. Um, and that is all that I have to answer. So I guess we'll relate to the.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Audrey?
I had, just have two points and I'm available for questions otherwise. Uh, point number one was the contract zoning question, and that is, of course, council is aware that you are not allowed to, and, uh, to do contract zoning or contract comp planning. You need to have the public hearing processes, which is what we're doing today, and you need to make a decision at that time. As to the annexation agreement, subsection 3.5, while we talked about other portions within that section, it does say that any approved change as determined appropriate by council will be approved in conjunction with amendment of any similar land within the city, if determined to be appropriate by the city. After all necessary hearings and review, which is what we're doing right now, the necessary hearings, the city will adopt the plan if, again, it finds the amendment in compliance with the required criteria of Chapter 163 Florida statutes. And that's what you're reviewing tonight, whether or not it meets that requirement. Um, I also want to point out that as to your actual comprehensive plan, and this relates to the comprehensive plan annotation that was done in 2003, um, I want to, it is something that's internal to your comprehensive plan. Uh, there is language. The purpose of having a comprehensive plan annotation is to ensure the legislative intent of the adopting council is understood and applied by subsequent city councils. So, so it's not just the employees and private property owners and other affected persons, which are referenced also in the comp plan annotation, but also on subsequent city councils. Uh, and whether, if they ever decide to do a comp plan annotation, and we've only done one comp plan annotation under this procedure, we do so in accordance with statutory construction, legal advice, and compiled in writing in a document. Uh, once adopted in accordance with the procedures that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, the annotation is to have the full force of local law and all persons are on constructive notice of its existence. Now, um, outside my scope as attorney, I'm sometimes one of the few people that may remember or recall what happened during the course of this, aside from, uh, Mayor Nelson, who was also, uh, present and was involved as the adopting council members in the adoption of that resolution. Um, we can always pull up more research of councils, wants to understand it better, but the, when looking at that annotation, that provision of the city's comprehensive plan, and I believe this is something Mr. Brooks pointed out too, did not change. And just because it did not change does not mean it's inconsistent with law. I mean, that's something that could be a challenge. It was something that we may need to address, whether we address it through a challenge or through the air action. It's something that's available. Um, you have my revised, um, language here for the, the hearings. And remember, we're doing the comp plan.
Got it. Carl, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the record, Carl Schwing, city manager. Um, I've heard several times tonight references to the fact that we have not reached out to the city of, or to the Village of Astero. Uh, and I will just say for the record that that is inaccurate, uh, that we have emails, uh, as far back as September 1st of 2015, putting the city's staff on notice, uh, of this interest, uh, of this, of this particular project and its proposal and asking for their comments. And they, we have emails indicating that there was dialogue back and forth, uh, with regards to the project. So that is inaccurate. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, Audrey, uh, that's it? We're all, we're all good? Next step. This, uh, council, got any questions? Yes, Peter?
No, no questions.
No question?
Ma'am.
Comments?
Ma'am.
Yes?
Uh, Steve McIntosh, uh, this is my district. This is my home. I've lived in, on, in Bonita Springs and Pelican Landing for 20 years. And I don't want anything to happen that will jeopardize quality of life. The, um, one comment about protocol, I appreciate the, the professionalism, people came up to the podium tonight. Uh, I'm, I'm elected official, so I'm a target. I, I got that a couple of times tonight. That's fine. Uh, please recognize that, uh, our staff are not targets. If you have something that you don't like about what our staff's done, please come to city manager Carl Schwing or to me, as opposed to taking it on the podium. It's not appropriate, in my opinion. There are, when you sit up here in council, you hear a lot of things and, you know, you try to balance them all. I make my decisions not on what somebody tells me, but what I study. I use the law and, and I, I certainly, uh, listen to our professionals when they come to a conclusion on something. The, uh, the two things you don't recognize about council responsibilities are these. We have a fiduciary responsibility and we have a risk management responsibility. And I, I'm a little hesitant to take legal advice from one side or the other on whether or not we are jeopardizing the city when we make a decision. And I'll leave that up to our own attorney. But I will tell you that the decision made here tonight, if it, it runs against the request of, of the, uh, developer, we will have consequences. And it's not just, it's just not just financial. They have other means to get to this issue and they probably will. So recognize that tonight, while you're here, we are taking a risk and, and the decision was being made, but we'll make the right decision for this city. Because ultimately, law, logic, all comes down to greater good of the city, the greater good of the citizens here. And we are elected to represent you, the citizens, and protect that greater good. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments? Yep, Mike?
I did have a question about, um, the number of acres that were annexed into the city. I believe I saw it was like approximately 55. Does the current zoning of 1 and 3 apply only to that 55 acres? And if it doesn't?
1 and 3.
Well, the county zoning. It says 1 to 3 units per acre.
Oh, Outlying Suburban.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. Can you rephrase the question now? I know.
Okay, we annexed in approximately 55 acres. The, um, Outlying Suburban was 1 to 3 units per acre.
Correct.
So that would be a max of 165 units. How many units are being proposed by the, uh, WCI?
This is where it gets a little confusing. When you have a planned development, so in this case, and I'll give you an example of the CLO project, which was also annexed by the city, it is currently designated as Lee County Outlying Suburban. It has approximately 96 units on about 12 acres, and I'll look to Grady Minor to confirm. That well exceeds your density range of 1 to 3 units an acre in the Outlying Suburban. But because it's a planned development, it is looked at grossly at plan development wide. So when you have a planned development, you're not looking at, when a parcel is parceled out, um, you're not looking at, like the high-rise towers, they definitely don't meet 1 to 3 units an acre. It's the planned development itself on a gross acreage. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, so in this case, and even in the Lee plan, there's a policy where they can blend densities across multiple land use classifications. So it, it is a very complex process.
So this pertains to the whole DRI?
Correct. Well, the pla, even the plan developments as well.
So being as it goes from Bonita to Astero and, um, unincorporated Lee County, how can it be fair to any one, like Astero, uh, for example, um, you know, say they had the same adopted 1 per 3 for that area, but it's based on just what's in their city?
That's why the.
But if you use the whole DRI and you say, well, in Bonita, there's all this extra green space, so we're gonna build, you know, 500 units here where your 1 and 3 would only be 100. How could that, you know, how does that work? And, and why would that be fair?
It all goes down to the DRI and the zoning, because the DRI caps the density and the need, the intensity. And when a zoning application comes in, we will check to make sure it's consistent with the DRI and the zoning. And that is why Lee County, Village of Astero, were also given copies of the applications for the DRI amendment and the plan development zoning. It's a big coordination effort and now that we, some of the zoning dozen, uh, zoning, um, plan developments do now transverse through jurisdictions and it will be very important that we coordinate to make sure that all the dent, that the requests before us are consistent with those entitlements. So it's extremely important for cross coordination. So we make sure that, that is correct.
Neil, could you chime in just a bit?
I would like to respond to that. Jackie's correct. The density is looked at on the overall DRI basis. That density is 1.5 units per acre. And, and the county and the city look at density in that respect in the same way. But even more than that, we talked about it earlier, the county, when the DRI was originally approved, approved a total number of units within what was originally the Outlying Suburban land use category, so that the density in that part of the DRI didn't exceed 3 units an acre. That density or that total number of units was 2,266. We are not exceeding the number of units approved within the Outlying Suburban. So we are not exceeding in the overall DRI the total number of units permitted, and we're not exceeding the 3 units an acre on an overall basis. Your comp plan, as we talked about earlier, Wayne talked about, encourages clustering, so in one individual little parcel, it may be greater, but on the overall basis, we're still under the 3 units an acre.
Okay.
I guess what I don't understand is why would you even need to change it if it applies, you know, wholly to the DRI? Then why would it need to be changed from Outlying Suburban to the, uh, the mixed use plan development?
That's a really good question. Uh, and I think the answer is, why we're doing it is because Outlying Suburban is a Lee County category. And even though the whole DRI, when it was, the city incorporated, was in Outlying Suburban and urban community, the city decided that they wanted it in a city category. And so that's how the pink category got there. And so all we're doing today is changing from a county category that would allow the very development we're requesting, to a city category that's the same as the rest of Pelican Landing.
Is there a city category that's 1 to 3 units breaker?
There is. However, the way the city adopted their land use classifications, it's very different from how the county does their classifications. In our classifications, we actually specify unit type and we specify height. The Lee County designations do not. So you run a risk where, and I'll, again, I'll go back to the CLO example, where if you assign them a special designation of just 1 to 3 under an existing category that we have in our comprehensive plan that allows for the variety of types of units, you're gonna limit their height to 35 feet. So you're gonna create a situation where they're gonna be inconsistent based on the height, just because of the way we structure our units. That doesn't mean that you can't create a different classification, um, where you would not mention the height, but every land use classification mentions height, with the exception of Coconut Village.
So looking at the whole DRI, how many acres are in the whole DRI?
Two. Wow. The whole DRI or just the city portion?
Well, it, it wouldn't matter because it, it applies.
2,400.
2,400?
2,400 and you're allowed to build 1.5 for every acre?
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Just to clarify, the, the number, I can get you the exact number, but it's a little over 2,400 acres that comprise the Pelican Landing DRI.
All right.
And the, you guys are allowed to build 1.5 per acre?
That's what our density calculates to be. When you look at the total number of units approved, the 3,912 divided by the acreage, it comes up to about 1.5.
Okay, so 3,900. And, uh, what are you guys at now?
Somebody help me. I'll get you that number.
Any, any other questions meantime? Peter, did you have something? Nope?
I don't have a question. I'm just ready, I'm ready to call the question here.
Okay, uh, anybody have anything else?
You know, we've heard a lot of inconsistencies here this evening. Uh, we've heard health, safety and welfare of the community, and I'd like to make a motion to deny this.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Wait, there's a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion from anyone?
Uh, well, I would like an answer to my question before we.
Okay, go ahead.
In, in Pelican Landing, there's 2,242 units excluding the colony. If you include the colony, it's 965. And that would include the build-out of the 3 towers that are still left to be done.
So approximately 3,100?
Yeah, there's 518 units left on our existing density.
Yeah, there's 518 units left on our existing density that we can build within the colony, within Pelican Preserve DRI.
So you're allowed 500 units still?
500 with that, notwithstanding what happens tonight. If, if, if these 500 go onto these 4 towers, then they're gone. But we have up to 518 units left to build in the colony. It will get built.
Okay.
So if you build all of them right on these, the 55, then that would be 9.4 units per acre on a 55-acre lot.
I'll let your-
I, I mean, I understand it's DRY, or DRYY.
It's not inconsistent with Pelican Bay or Pelican, Benita Bay? Benita Bay, I mean, you're, you're taking the density in one particular parcel.
Is it consistent with the colony?
Completely.
Completely consistent with the colony. It's not unlike the colony, is it?
Not at all. It's exactly the same. It's in the Pelican Landing DRI. So what we're asking for is exactly the same.
Okay.
It's just recognizing the rights we had before.
You did the same type of clustering in the colony?
Absolutely. That's what we've done all through, not just in the towers, but in other parts, even our mid-rise product.
We don't have to go to Pelican Bay to see that. You can go across the road.
But I'm saying it's consistent, not just in Pelican Landing, but it's consistent throughout the city of Benita Springs.
Okay. All right.
My only point is that, you know, we're looking at a 55-acre piece, and we're putting 9.4 units per acre on a 55-acre.
That's, I don't think that's true, but go ahead.
If I might approach, and I think this gets down to a calculation of gross versus net density. If you look at any of the high-rise parcels that have been built in Pelican Landing or perhaps Benita Bay, those probably average anywhere from 17 to 25 units per acre when you look at the footprint that supports those towers. But on a gross basis, when you look at these communities, which is the way you tell us to calculate density, both of these projects have densities that are less than 2 units per acre. But you have pockets where you have high net density, because you've allowed these tower structures, and they approach higher densities, around 20 units per acre.
That's why, when these developments come through, they say we have so much in preserve areas, so much over here, so much over there, so much in open space you require. But when you do the density, you calculate the entire area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then do we have an estimate on how many units would be built in these 4 towers?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Do we have an estimate on how many units would be in these 4 towers?
Well, they, they vary depending on when they come to market and what the size of the units. But typically, you suggest that it's gonna be about 100 units per tower. That can vary. Some may go down as low as in the 80s, some go 120. But I generally use a number of about 100 units per tower when you're talking units of this structure to that height. So we're talking-
So then you'd still be allowed approximately 118. Where could they go if you wanted to continue building?
I'm not sure I understand the, the question. Oh, you're saying the other, the remaining units that WCI has left to build versus the- I don't know. I mean, that's, that's gonna be a choice for WCI communities. They could go back in, in areas that they haven't constructed for other unit types. They could put in a higher-density product, perhaps. But I don't think, I know that answer tonight.
Yep. All right. Any more questions? Uh, there's a motion and a second?
May I ask, Peter, is your motion both on the map and the, and the amendment?
Absolutely. I mean, in my mind, if we can tie bar them, we can vote on them.
I assumed it was, that's why I seconded it.
So it's the map, the text, it's the motion to deny the map and the text? And there's a second on that? Any other discussion?
Is Steve Slakka still with us, or?
Steve, you still there?
No.
Steve?
Do you need a super?
I think it'll be all right. What?
Do you need super?
No, I was just wondering. I wanted to make sure everybody understood the question while we were voting.
Steve's not here right now.
And there is a requirement that he fully participate, so if he's not here, he's not here. You know different than if somebody from council were home.
All right, there's a, there's a motion and a second. I, I'm gonna tell you all right now, you won't be happy with this, that's all right. Look, in 16 years, I've seen a lot of zoning cases, a lot of zoning cases, all right? A lot of them very similar to this, but not to you. This is very special to you. I get that. I've seen a lot of impassioned people talk in my little dinky little 16-year political career that is gonna end here in about 5 minutes. But I have to tell you, well, thank you very much for the encouragement. But I have to, I have to do what I think is right too. They have to do, everybody does. You, you shouldn't expect anything else from anybody else. I haven't heard anything, I mean, including the passion that you have, that I haven't heard on every other one that I've looked at. It's gonna cause traffic on my road. There's gonna be construction traffic. I'm gonna lose some, some of the amenities and the freedom, and there's gonna be ecological damage. All those things, including evacuation, including traffic. I have heard this before. I'm not discounting the way you feel about it. I, I'm not doing that. I'm just telling you that when I look at it, that's, that's what I see. I, I see that this is something that, that has been planned for a long time. The reason you love where you live is sitting right there. I, I mean, I can't take it away that you bring it to you emotion-wise and stuff. But you, this, this hatred for developers, we all-
Look, hey, hey, hey. The mayor's been very respectful to this crowd.
Now, wait, wait, wait. I don't, I don't need help. I didn't boo you one time. Have I been respectful to you? Expect the same. Call the question. Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye, to deny the motion.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No. Okay, the motion carries, denial. Okay, Audrey from here.
From here, we have the zoning. The zoning is an applicant-initiated case. You received the revised February 3rd outline. The applicant, first of all-
Uh, I, I would ask, we're gonna go ahead and continue, but those of you that wanna exit can go ahead and do so, but please do so quietly, okay? Thank you very much. Go ahead, Audrey.
I want to point out that Florida Statute Section 171.062, which is one of the annexation statutes, specifically says the property retains the county's land development-
Sure.
We'll take a 5-minute break.